Yes, this is bye. Yep. I'm sure it was, you know. We'll get through it like we always do. And. Well, yours is gonna be pretty easy. You know, because of what the scope of work. Are you taking two spots or just the one? Were you taking um, T-Mobile? The corner was UPS. Oh, I wonder where they're going. I wonder if they know they're going, or am I gonna stumble on that like I did with Barnes and Noble? You heard that story, right? They hadn't told their employees. Came up, it came up in a planning board meeting. You know, what's Burlington, well, Burlington's moving to Barnes and Noble. How do you know that? I have plans. And they signed a lease. It made, it made the Daily Freeman. Next thing I know, I'm getting a phone call. Why'd you say, it's public knowledge. I'm sorry that you didn't tell your employees. So then they had to scramble and try to get into Olive Garden like overnight. They didn't plan ahead. So. Yeah, so now they call me. Who's, who's closing? I'm not at liberty to divulge that information. You can find out like everybody. Are you there, Dave? Did you mean to call me? Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. All I ask for, thank you very much. Bye.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Schultz.
Hello, how are you guys?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Okay, everybody's working.
Alright. Can you hear me?
Yes, Warren, I see you there in the cryptic cathedral of code.
Yes, I got a call from the detective today for the town of Ulster Police. They're doing an investigation into Mo.
Into, into Mo?
He got contacted by DMV. So something, something's not right. So I just wanted you to keep that in the back of your mind. Doesn't affect what we do here.
Hang on a second, I gotta, I gotta raise up this volume. Okay, got it. Does Kevin know?
I think Kevin just got on.
Alright, there he is.
That shouldn't have to affect you because ultimately, town board has the final say in what goes on.
Yeah, well.
You guys can, you guys can move forward however you want. Just thought you needed to know.
Yeah. Thank you. Always makes life interesting.
Oh, every time I turn around.
Yeah. Alright. And no, I haven't found the dog yet.
Really? Oh, I thought, I didn't know you were still, were still looking.
I still am.
You are? Okay.
Not very aggressively. For a lot of reasons. But keep my eye out, I've got this pet by.
I will, I'll keep my eyes open, it's, it's, we're getting down where pandemic mayhem is over now and there's actually dogs. And young dogs coming around.
I'm beginning to see. Dogs that are like eighteen months old. Someplace along those lines, starting to show up for adoption. Means the people at home are going back to the office and they don't know. They come back in, their furniture's all chewed up. Well.
Yeah, the problem is like they, they were COVID dogs and they weren't trained well and socialized well and. Yeah, believe me, every trainer I know right now has got their hands full.
Well, it's called a windfall. I don't enjoy it all again.
Get a puppy.
Yeah, my vet said, don't get a puppy, you too are too old for a puppy.
Get a puppy from a breeder who if anything happens is willing to take the dog back.
Yeah, that's a kid. There's, there's, there's a few of them out there that are good that way.
No, yeah, that's the kind of breeder you need to get to.
How's your project in Solberg is doing?
Good, I'm gonna be closing on my loan in about a week and a half and ordering the building and we should be up and running by August.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Working with you for a change?
Beg your pardon?
The town working with you for a change?
The town actually has been really very, very. Very supportive of the project. I got my permits without a lot of.
Excellent.
Stuff. Writing that cell tower, but we want.
With that cell tower, that's what I was referring to.
Application denied.
Outstanding, that puts good for you.
Yeah, they're going back to the firehouse, I'm hopefully it'll be done. Yeah, we'll be open, so when you get that dog. And you know what, I'll, I'll put more feelers out for you, Bob.
Thank you.
I'll keep an ear out.
Everybody have a nice holiday, I missed you all. Enjoying my shrimp gumbo with cheesy grits, but that's okay.
Nice, oh, I love that stuff.
Oh, I know, I do too. Yeah.
Lois here, I haven't seen Lois in ages.
She missed two meetings the last time.
I was just texting with her, she's, I don't, where, where are we meeting? I said, check your email from this afternoon, you'll have the Zoom link.
I'm sorry, that's, that's Lois.
How's Gabby doing? She, when's she due? Warren.
In March. So.
We're getting close.
She got COVID.
Yeah, so how's she feeling now?
She's, she's, she's better. Came back to work Monday, Tuesday.
A friend of mine died last week down in South Carolina from COVID.
Sorry to hear that.
Was he vaccinated?
I know Bill like a book, he's as, he's as independent, headstrong, and no one tells him what to do. No, I don't think so.
Okay, cuz I, my friend lost her uncle last week and he, he wasn't vaccinated.
We have another friend just came out of the hospital, back and forth. She has been vaccinated, but she has terrible autoimmune disease.
Yeah.
Like my wife, she didn't get a half dose booster, she had to get a full dose booster. It was leukemia, you know, it's just. Lucky it even works.
Yeah, I have a good friend on the Kuba board with me who has been battling it. Three, four times and she's been triple vaxxed, but she's. You know, very severe diabetic.
That's, that's a bad thing. And if there's any weight issues.
Yeah.
I guess I can't get a fast game of solitaire, huh?
What time do we have? Seven minutes, we don't have too many with us here, huh?
We have three minutes, right?
Yes.
Three minutes to go.
Andy, you have the flag?
I do.
I, I count, I've got twenty of them in the basement.
We don't have a quorum yet though, do we?
All we need to have is three for a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Right, I mean, you got five and you.
Shall I blow on it? Give it a little.
My question, ask the chairman.
No, you, you don't have to blow on.
I mean, just in case you shy waving, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Waving.
We could do a fake setup like the kid on the moon. Out full.
This is a handy little thing, I don't know how I got it, but I have it.
I picked a bunch up like that at the dollar store for like Memorial Day and I stick them in the ground along my sidewalk.
Well, this is actually a little brass. See, it's a little brass flagpole, it must have been for a dollhouse or something. I have no idea where it came from, I have no clue where it came from.
Would be, or some politician had it on his desk.
It came from, might've came from my in-laws. Who knows?
What do we do if the folks that are. That are looking for their approval aren't here? Do we?
Um, what I, you can do what you want, what I did was I'd ask around and I would put it off till the next month.
Right.
Corporations generally are good that way, they will show up because that's, that's money in their, out of their pockets.
Right.
It's part of the public hearing, right? Is there a public hearing or is it just a new?
It's all public hearings tonight.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Nothing new.
Show up a representative, show up or have a representative show up for you. Because the public doesn't have a chance to ask the questions if they want to of the individual.
Have you guys been able to see the, the email from Jeffrey? That I forwarded?
Yes.
Okay.
They have a nice site plan, agree upon.
Yeah, that, that, that's changed it nicely.
But Kevin, this is Jeffrey, don't forget the, this is a public comment period, it's not necessarily a public question and answer period, so the applicant. Can have, can be there or cannot be there, but the purpose of a public hearing is for the public to make comments, just.
Can you actually, can you vote upon it?
Sure you can.
Alright, so it's just basically whether they're there or not?
That's correct. So a, a public comment, whether it's a town board, the planning board, or the zoning board, is an opportunity for the public. To make a comment, in general, it's a three-minute period of time where the public can. Express their feelings. About the project, oftentimes there is questions and if the applicant is there, the applicant can. Answer questions or defend as appropriate, but again, it is a public comment period.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey.
Who's the one that's not here? Let me guess, Mo?
Mo is there.
I don't, I just see the top. Pledge here.
Okay. Alright, seven o'clock, should we get started? Can we all stand for the, can we all stand for the pledge, please? Andy's flag there, we all need it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, Jason.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith. Ms. Chico Levin.
Present.
Mr. Porter.
Present.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Chairman Reggino.
Here. Now we'll move on to the approval of minutes, Mr. Porter, I know you had a concern last time, has that been rectified or?
Yes, as she'll be being at the December meeting, I wanted to make sure that she'll be not at the December meeting.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, so does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes?
As president in the history of modern France. Is my call, you got it right.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes, that's meant as, as we discussed.
Yes.
Okay, can we get a vote, please?
Ms. Chico Levin.
Aye.
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, I think we're getting a little feedback from somebody.
I just muted them.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have to elect the ZBA secretary for today. That's pretty straightforward. Nominate Gabby.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Gabby, you're on.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
Hey, Mo, how are you?
Hey, you can hear me?
Oh, yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I did it right.
Alright, so we have not closed the public hearing from the last time we met. So that's still open, Mo, if you wanna just briefly go over what's changed since the last meeting. And then I'll, I'll, I'll give the, if there's anybody on the public a quick chance to make some comments.
Okay, yeah, basically, we originally were gonna go with like an eight foot. A six to an eight foot with no shrubs, nothing, just a plain fence. And cuz of the pushback, we changed it to six for sure. But we, you know, we kinda left it open for eight, you know, I was explaining it's better to just go for the higher, remember? So now, it's definitely six foot on the planning board, everything so that, and the fence has been pushed back to. The edge of the pavement curb instead of like towards the middle of that grass line area. Which is where the line was. Because I had a Department of Public Works representative come down and he kinda showed me that it would be a lot better if it would be on the curb itself. Which, you know, it's fine with me, so now all the shrubbery was gonna be on my property, not on the county, so I don't need permission. And that's it, so they, they told me like a three to a six range of the shrubbery, not to really go too high. Just to cover the fence, majority of it's it.
Alright, great.
Uh, do you want me to go into the purpose and all that stuff again?
Well, you can tell us whatever you'd like. Whatever you feel, I know you, I know some, there's been some changes since the last meeting with the planning board, you've. If you wanna let the board know those changes, just so, you know, we can take them into consideration on the vote?
Yeah, the change again is, you know, that defense is gonna be pushed to the curb line and the shrubbery is gonna be about three to six feet. And basically, like I said, I need it for security, I'm not gonna be there all the time, there's been vandalism on the property, you could see it already. So once I start cleaning up the trailer and I start painting everything, I don't wanna have to do this all over again. And, you know, it's cars, so they, it was on saying like a group of cars sitting in a yard is more attractive. To thieves, where they go through the cars. And another thing I just wanted to mention, there was somebody at the public meeting, at a town board meeting complaining about a bum. Homeless guy, sorry. Was sleeping on his property because of the policing, they wanted more police cars. So I don't want homeless people walking by, they said there's a problem with evictions or something, coming and trying to sleep in a car, you know, it's just a liability, so I just wanted to add that.
Okay. No, I think there was also some concerns about noise and smells, I think you addressed them also, right?
I, I thought you meant just the fence stuff, so.
Yeah, we're with the fence, but you did address a few different concerns that the planning board had.
Yes, we, we rectify that and the time on Sundays to not be too active before twelve. To really start operating at twelve, which no problem for me, it's very, you know. Fine.
Alright, is there anybody on from the public that would like to make any comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we should have a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, I thought we, we kept it open, no, it, it.
Uh, we need a motion then to reopen.
I, I'll reopen the meeting, the public hearing.
I'll send it to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes.
I don't think there's anybody.
It looks like Pastor Schultz would like to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, I wanna acknowledge that Mo has made some significant efforts and I appreciate that to try to address the concerns that he's heard. Very respectful of Chairman Ring and everybody else involved in these processes, so. Wanna say thank you to all of you for your investment in this. Just with each opportunity we've had though, I wanna continue to take the opportunity to really object and request that the variances that are being requested be denied. We still think it's a real mistake for the character of that neighborhood. To be moving a fence up so close to the road, especially a chain link fence. And I recognize the position that Mo is in, I, I hear that with honestly compassion. But by pulling the fence that close to the road, even at a six-foot fence level, you now effectively have a ten-foot high fence when you're, you're on Hurley Avenue. It went from the bottom of a hill meaningfully up to the top of the hill. We still would request, if it's gonna be up that close, that it be a four-foot fence. And ideally, it would be pushed further back where the, the current zoning law allows for it, so. We just wanna continue to request that and speak into it, we're gonna continue to be respectful of all of you and. Independently of the outcome, we're gonna do whatever we can again to be supportive of Mo as he moves forward in business, but. That fence is a, it's a mistake for the, the character of that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, Mo has indicated that he went from an eight-foot fence to a six-foot fence. And it's also gonna be moved five foot back from the front property line. And on the eight feet from the south property line, on the, on the north side.
Right.
Property on the north.
Correct.
Right.
Plus the shrub.
But so what we. But so what we as a board are looking at is the two, uh, two-foot height variance, uh, that, that's about it. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make some comments? Hi.
Um, my name is Chris Bell. I, I started looking at this today, and I got to wondering why we have setbacks. And I looked at the zoning code, and, uh, first I was interested to discover that there really was, there was a lot of description about what the setbacks were, dimensions, what you could and could not do within the setback. But nowhere was there a statement saying why we have setbacks. What, what's the concept underneath this? And so I looked through more detail on the code, and what I determined based on the specific regulations that exist regarding setbacks is that they seem to be a vehicle for ensuring that particularly in the front you have, uh, an unobstructed area between the street and the activity on the property. And, you know, the things that are listed, I wrote, I wrote them down. Section one ninety dash eighteen, these are permitted things in the front setback as an accessory used in a commercial area. The gatehouse, which normally would be very small, landscaping, the watchman's post similar to a gatehouse, I suppose, uh, approved signs, certain signs, lighting, and a flagpole. None of these things, uh, clutter the visual view that you see from the street of the property. And I think that's why the zoning code allows for a four-foot fence. If you think about it in a municipal area, if you were walking along a sidewalk in front of the property, you'd probably be able to see over a four-foot fence, and your view would be unobstructed. But a higher fence would eventually, depending on how tall you are, obstruct your view. And that's why it requires a variance, especially in the front. I think the situation here is very clear. We have a commercial operation. There's a forty-foot front setback. We want to have a, an unobstructed view of what's going on in there. A six-foot fence conceals that. I know Mo's done a great job in, in responding to requests for vegetation alongside the fence, but I agree with Pete. I think it's simply not appropriate to the area. It's, it conceals, and it gets rid of that unobstructed view, which I think is the real reason why we have a front setback.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Can I respond to that, uh, before we continue?
Uh, no, this is a public comment. There's no, uh, back and forth right now, Mo. Thank you.
Right?
If you want to say something at the end, we'll give you that opportunity.
Appreciate it.
I'd actually like to say a few words.
Alright. My name's Keith Mack. I live very close to the property. Um, actually, President Hudson Valley Ice and Sports be on the property adjacent to the, uh, site and behind it. Um, I understand his concern regarding security. However, if you look at any of the other, um, dealerships in the area, whether they're used cars or new cars, none of them have any security fences around them. It's a proven fact that lighting is more of a deterrent to vandalism than, uh, fences. Um, whether it's a six-foot fence or an eight-foot fence, it can be scaled. Um, people can, you know, cut through it, whatever. Lighting is, is, uh, much more of a deterrent, and I think that's a more uh, viable way to prevent vandalism than offenses. And since this is gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood's character, I really don't see where it should be allowed, whether it's six foot, four foot, eight foot. Um, you know, quite honestly, I don't think it's necessary. And yes, the fact is, is that he specifically did not put any security lighting on his site plan. And I, I don't know why, because that's much more of a deterrent to what he's concerned about than offenses.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mack. Did you have any, do, do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Mo, I'll give you a, a, a quick, a brief minute to, to say your piece, and then we're gonna move on.
Okay, just quick, uh, to the original guy who said, you know, the shrubs was the only, I, you know, that's not the only thing I did. We went from an eight to a six, okay? I moved that fence off the line back. So now it's about twenty-five feet from that white line to my curb line. It's, it's really far, you know? So I did all those things to just kind of quench any possibility of talking about obstruction.
We, we have, we have all the information, Mo. I know we.
I want to point that out because I don't want him to leave the, that, that. Another thing with Mr. Mack, uh, Mr. Mack himself, I haven't witnessed that he was trespassing on my property a few times, so.
That, that's not, uh, that's not necessary.
This has to do with the fence. This is another reason why I need a fence. That's honestly why I'm saying this right now to you, okay? Okay, and he's talking about security lights. And I specifically said, if I put lights and make that property look like a Christmas tree at night, it's gonna, it's gonna piss people off, because not everybody wants it lit up like that. Every time it goes on, they don't want that. When it's dark, people don't want to leave it dark. So I don't want to disrupt the neighborhood light. That's why I said that.
Alright, Mo, thank you.
No problem.
Or do we have anything to say, Andy?
Yes, sir. I have a few questions and a couple of comments. Um, first of all, we're not looking at a setback requirement if it's a four-foot fence, correct? But if it goes anything over, we will be looking at a setback requirement. Am I right on that, or are we not looking at setbacks?
I don't think we're looking at setbacks. We're only looking at a two-foot variance for the fence.
Okay, so the setback, that, that's within the zoning code?
Within, I, I believe so, uh.
Warren, are, are we correct on that? Because it seems awfully close. I'm just curious.
If it were, if all of the fence in the front setback was four foot in height, there would be no variance required.
Okay, so we would only be looking at a height, a height variance for the front, right? It's within the setback, right? Am I correct?
The front and the two sides.
Okay, well, um, the sides, we'll get to that. Um, okay, so, and I realized that this is a chain link fence. So there are open chain link fences, and then there are the chain link fences that put the privacy screen inside of them. So I wanted to ask the applicant if that was his intention of putting the privacy screen on that chain link fence or not. And in addition to that, but let me, let me finish. That way he can answer everything altogether. Though, or, and this is actually a statement. In, in, in fact, he wouldn't be lighting the area up like a Christmas tree because there are lighting um, limitations within the zoning code, if I'm not correct, for downward lighting, things that don't enhance light pollution. Am I right, Warren? We have that kind of stuff in our planning code anyway. So, just because he says it's gonna be lit up like a Christmas tree, that's not really true. That, because the planning board will tell him he has to be within the parameters of what the lighting will allow, and most of it now is downward lighting, low impact, the, to, enough to illuminate his parcel without s- doing light pollution, if you will. Am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so, lighting is really a better way to go than putting this quote-unquote six-foot um, thing. So I do want to ask about the, the screening for the chain link fencing. I guess that's my biggest question. The other one's really more statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mo, can you answer to that?
Absolutely. Um, so when I originally put it through, I mentioned slits that were gonna go, and people were actually complaining, um, between slits or a screen, possibly just a basic screen. But the shrubbery was more for the neighborhood that don't want to see the fence, period. Um, but again, the lighting, um, at night, i- you know, just brightening it up, because things could just turn it on like with motion, and it just complicates things that I didn't want to do. And just very quickly, when they keep quoting about these million-dollar dealerships that are around without a fence, they have buildings, Chairman Reggino, okay? They have buildings they could store vehicles in. Okay, I'm not putting a building. I'm at a disadvantage. All I have is an office trailer. So I don't have any way to secure the cars if I don't have a building. I just really want to point that out very clearly to you. I'm not gonna be there all the time. It's, so.
What would be the answer to the, to the fence? Will there be something, uh?
Uh, yes, when I get to that fence point, uh, I will probably put, um, because people, I guess, don't like slits, I'll probably put like the, uh, the kind of blanket, maybe like a clean color, I mean, something. I don't, I don't know. That's, you know, that's not something that was required, specified. Uh, all I was bound to do right now is do the six-foot chain link fence, the shrubbery from three to six feet. You know, now, asking me questions that I can't guarantee you, but I'm planning to probably put the screen itself. The blanket kind of, right. It's a little more.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify. Six foot means that we would have to have a different variance because there's the height in addition, right? Four foot, no variance, right? Six foot variance, okay, okay.
Yeah, two-foot variance for the, for the, uh.
The front foot. Alright, very good, okay. Thank you.
I have some questions if everybody else is done, if you can hear me.
Hi, Lois.
Hi, Lois. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm sorry I signed on late. I had a little bit of technical difficulties that the supervisor thankfully helped me with. Anyway, um, I'm sorry to take up your time, but I want to answer, jump on where Andy left off. Appreciate it. Andy, um, defining what she had said to the gentleman that asked about the variances. Um, I didn't catch his name. I, I caught the second gentleman's name, Keith, but the one that spoke with him in reference to why we have setbacks and the setback requirement exceptions, and he recited the section of one ninety dash eighteen for setback requirements, the exceptions. He did list them in chronological order, all the way through number six, but what he failed to recognize the responsibility that we have in protecting all the residents, including the applicant, is that these were, these, um, specific zoning, um, rules and regulations were put into effect for public safety, which includes, um, shrubs and hedges and other things of separate nature. And it is a visual safety, not only visual, it's a hazard, it's a safety hazard, other obstructive things there. So, and we have to, we have to take into consideration, um, if, if he did indeed, uh, this is a question to the applicant. I'm, I'm changing up here a little bit. But, uh, in, in reference to finishing up about the codes, asking about why the variances were made. And, um, it's to protect his fence also. Any highway department person will tell you the amount of snow that we get. They don't want to be responsible for destroying his fence and held liable for that, because that would also be on the town. It's always gonna come back to the town regardless of right or wrong or indifferent. So there's plenty of safety rules and regulations, fire hazard and road safety and safety for the applicant. And people, um, exiting his, his business. And like Andy said, there's plenty of fence screens. Now, just because you're on the application, it says chain link, well, there's, um, the vinyl coated chain link. And then you can add, like Andy said, the shaded screenery. You can also go slap by slap and make it totally, um, you, you cannot see through it at all. It would be non-transparent at that point. So if we were to approve it, even though it says chain link, you can, um, add a variety of variances to that chain link fence. So that has to be taken into consideration when, if, however this works out. So anyway, question to the applicant, Mr. Mo, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can very quick. I just can't see you.
I'm sorry. It's my phone thing. Um, anyway, question to you. Did you personally fill out the application for this variance?
Absolutely.
So you read the application?
Of course, yeah.
Wonderful. That's what I needed to know. And you did read what our requirements are to pass this variance. A- and if, if we were to pass it, we would have to grant you the minimum requirement because there are set rules and regulations to protect all the residents and the public safety for these reasons. So you did fill that out. You did read all five rules on there, and you do have to pass each and every one of those five rules. And are, are you saying that, yes, you meet all those qualifications?
What I'm saying is I'm requesting two feet on top of what's already allowed by code.
That was a question. I know what you're requesting. I'm well aware of what you're requesting. My question was, you did fill out the application, you said. You did read the application. And you do understand we have to meet, every single question has to be a given answer on there, why we should grant.
Ms. Smith, I, I, I'd just like to mention, in the last six years, uh, you have never, your board has not denied a six-foot.
That's not.
A lot, never. I, I have people in the board, I have people in the town telling me that. So just to quench that, if you try, wanna say that now you want to deny me, that's fine. Just please give a legal reason what we have to do so we move forward.
Wait a second, wait. You cannot tell me what I'm, what my decision is gonna make.
I'm not telling you that. I'm saying if, ma'am, I said if.
I have to, like every other applicant that comes.
It's been back and forth. We didn't want.
Denying anybody else. We don't deny everybody or approve everybody, but sir, you have to treat everybody the same, and we do.
I, 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 I'm not, I'm not talking, I'm just talking about legally. In the last six years, you have den- not denied a six-foot.
That's not true. No, that's not true.
I've already done my research.
Okay, we're gonna have to, uh, quell it a bit, please. Uh, and so Lois, your question, your question is, uh,
Does he mean?
Have he met all five, the criteria?
All five, yes.
To meet this. And, and your, and your answer, Mo, to that is?
Reggino, I've made numerous modifications to, to meet all the criteria that you have asked.
Okay.
Pointed it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mo. Truly, thank you for that answer. I appreciate you answering my question.
I wasn't trying to be evasive. I just wanted to.
And I wasn't either. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, absolutely.
Do we have any more questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman, and for Mr. Mo as well. So say hypothetically, we did approve this variance. Is there any, um, are you planning on putting up some kind of shade in or screen, um, type visuals, whatever? I, I'm not sure of the word. I forgive.
Did you, did you, maybe you came in late, but the other lady just asked the same question. So, so.
Sorry.
No, I don't mean to start impatient with the identical question two, two minutes ago. So.
Right.
Okay, just to mention again.
Plan on doing that?
Yeah.
Right.
Originally, it was gonna be slits, right? And that kind of stirred up things. So then I'm probably gonna go with like a blanket type of thing on a six foot. Um, but again, you know, that wasn't discussed. As long as I have a chain link with the shrubbery between three and six. You know, now, if we're talking about that I'm obligated to, you know, say I put a blanket and all this, yeah. I'm gonna more likely do that, but I'm just not gonna guarantee that to you at the board, and I don't want that as a condition. I'm trying to be careful what I say, so.
Right, I understand.
That's all. I'm not trying to like, you know, give you the runaround with your questions, but these are new things that are being. these are new things that are being very specific now from like, you know, the shrubs was enough to cover it for the neighborhood. Now the blanket, that's kind of like, that's on my side and my thing, but you know, more likely, probably because I wouldn't just leave an open chain link fence because the shrubs just might not cover it enough, you know, like no matter what. So I'll probably just go with that. Not the slits probably because people are accusing of junkyards and all this.
Right. So here was my question. Why I asked it. I'll tell you why I asked it. Because would it obstruct somebody's vision? Yes, if you added that. But if you didn't add that, it, it would be a clear, not a perfectly clear view, uh, obviously. But it would be, um, it would be a safer view. You know what I mean? Like you could see what's coming both.
Let me ask a question. That fence is twenty-five feet from the white line, okay? And I, I'm just, I'm confused. Who are you talking about being safe to? It's twenty-five feet away from the line. So I'm kind of missing what you mean. When the gates close, there's gonna be no cars coming out of that property. So are you saying that if some cars coming out of the property? I'm just not understanding, who are you concerned about seeing through the fence?
If cars coming in and exiting the property. Or you'll have people, I mean, let's face it, if your gates open, there's gonna be people that are maybe lost or went past their turn. They're going to use your parking lot. I, I mean, I could be one of those people. I'd go past the place I'm supposed to be at all the time. But um, do you know what I mean? It's not.
Uh, I kinda do, but when the gates.
I think that was, that was uh, that was addressed with the, with the planning board, wasn't it? The access to Early Avenue? Wasn't that setback? So that you're able to get uh, um, you know, those trucks that look.
An hour and a half, correct.
Right. So they're able to see uh, when they're coming off.
Right. Yeah, I did that just because, you know, I could've got a permit and really not did that. But I just didn't want to. It's okay. So I just moved it and have a nice day. That's it. No, no, no problem.
Yeah, so, so Lois, that, that was addressed by the planning board, um, you know, so that the vehicles have a safe exit or entry with room to, to see what's uh, what's coming and going.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not talking about the area, the width. I was talking about the visualization. I am sorry. I don't have any documentation in front of me. I'm going by what you're saying voice wise, so I'm trying to see it in my head what you're, so uh, yeah. Anyway, it wasn't in reference to the space. It was in reference to the visualization. So when I hear fence in a setback, I just wanna be sure that it's, it's sa, it's for everybody's safety and um, that's it.
Andy?
I had a question for Warren. Warren, with the DOT, this is just for my clarification because um, Mo keeps uh talking about the white line, which is the end of the, the roadway, which is the actual lane. What's the, what's the easement? Um, how many feet is that for the easement, Warren? That for the town and for the state to take? What, what's their required?
Typically for town roads, it's twenty-five feet from the center line is our easement and for county and state.
So that the center line in most lanes are what? Ten, ten feet?
Uh, no, more than that. Typically twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve and more. Let me see on the parcel viewer.
So twenty feet from the center line and then say twelve feet. So that would be, okay. I'm just trying, when he says it's eighteen from the white line, I know DOT always talks from the center line, so I'm just trying to.
No, it's almost twenty-five.
Irrelevant. Excuse me, Mr. Uh, sir. I'm just trying to work things out with um, Warren, who knows more details about me so I can make a better decision. Um, am I, am I right? Cause the white line, it's really more about the center line, correct?
Correct.
Every, every road is a little bit different depending on the.
That town roads are pretty much straightforward. As our county, state's a little different, but we're not dealing with state road. We're dealing with it for the county road.
County road.
My understanding that the applicant spoke with uh, County DPW and that's why the fence got moved back a little more so that they would be appeased being able to get off of Early Avenue safely to be able to open the fence.
So there is right on, is basically right on, on the legal line. Am I correct? And within our setback?
Uh, well, not our setback, county. It would be a county setback. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for that right now. So hopefully I'll get that next month.
Yeah, I have a question from Mo. Mo, right, right now you don't have any fences on your property, correct?
Correct.
On the north side facing Coleman, there is a four foot chain link fence, correct?
Correct.
That's a different piece of property that separates yours?
At the planning board, we address this um, cause I'm not touch that fence. Cause it's kind of like on their property, right? So I'm just putting my wood fence in front of it. Correct line, correct?
Okay. Now there's a fence on the back of your property also?
Not now, but I will.
There's just woods on the back of your property? Okay. So there is an existing four foot fence that's chain link that is not yours, that has been there for a long time and people have looked at it.
Steve, say the number again because my, uh, you broke up when you said an existing.
There's an existing four foot chain link fence on the Coleman side of that property.
Okay, thank you.
Not his, that has been there for a long time.
Four feet, you said.
Correct. There is no fence across the back of your property. You're gonna put that up, but that's gonna be at the back of your property and you're looking to do a six foot fence there.
All around.
All around. On the church side, I was in the church parking lot. There is a brush row there or there is a vegetation row there that is at least six to eight feet tall. Is that on your property or is that on the church property?
It was like half, right? So I trimmed, I would say a chunk of it. I still have to trim a little more once we get closer to doing fence, but a good chunk of it will remain, right?
That's, that was my question. So there is a vegetation or there is some kind of growth.
Barrier?
Barrier from the church, but I understand the church is higher and they're gonna look down on the property. I get that. Just like from the road looking up, you're gonna see a fence. But there is a row of vegetation there that will obstruct your fence in the warm months.
Right.
If it's, if it's leaf bearing or whatever, whatever, in the winter months, you may see the fence a little bit more.
Just correct. It's wood though. You, you understand that, right?
Yes.
It's not the, okay. Yes.
So, but it is, but, but, but the vegetation or the growth right now, from what I saw, is at least sixty-eight, eight feet high.
Yeah, it's high.
Okay.
Definitely.
So there is an existing four foot chain link fence.
Yes.
On the north side of your property that has never been a problem.
The Central Hudson side, yes.
Correct. There is nothing across the back and there's vegetation on the south side.
Correct.
So you will be installing something new in the front that'll be new and different.
The chain link.
Correct. With landscape and a setback far enough from the county that the county told you that you need to be.
Yes. Um, he just recommended, I just wanna make this clear again. He only recommended, I could've just got a permit and left it where I was at. He, he recommended because he, he kinda parked his car, did measurements, he did like a big diagram, great job, did it right away. So he just said it would be better, Mo, if you just put it at the edge. And actually Jeffrey Ring, the chairperson, told me that specifically. He said it first. And I'm like, ah, I didn't really think about it, but it's fine because then I could just put my vegetation. I don't need anybody's permission.
Your only problem would be um, and I kinda know this a little bit, is if there's a ditch that runs in front of your property. Um, the county road, they will come in and they'll clean out the ditch. You know, that, that is your only worry about encroachment on the county property. Snow, if you have signs out there, they're gonna get hammered when they plow your road, okay? Um, but if you're back, if you're back far enough and everybody's great with that, then, then I'm fine with that too.
Yeah, even the shrubbery, you know, the fence is almost twenty-five feet from the white line, you know?
That will be.
Might fall away where, that's what she was trying to mention with the snow. That's not going all the way over there. That.
It'll never reach, it'll never reach that.
I think to say one thing, clarification regarding the four, existing four foot fence on the north side. Um, Hudson Valley Ice and Sports actually owns an easement agreement with Central Hudson, permanent easement on that side of that property. So we own a seventy-five foot easement on that. So that fence is actually on our property. And during your clearing of that property, you dropped a tree on our fence and it's still there. And then when I went on your property, I was there to talk to your uh, there were tree people to make sure they didn't do such a thing. And they assured me that it, that if they dropped anything on our property, that they would remove it. Unfortunately, that still hasn't been done and the fence hasn't been repaired. So.
Mr. Mack, I appreciate what you're saying, but this, this isn't the forum to uh.
I just wanna know, I wanna, want you to know.
There's no need to address it because that's not gonna uh, have anything to do with what uh, what we're doing here.
Say was, I apologize. I understand exactly what he's talking about. In a few days, we are gonna move all the logs. I told him, do that day one. I told my guy and tell him I apologize. I didn't know it was part.
Okay.
It's very confusing. It says on the map.
Thank you. Again, that, 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 that's uh, that's beyond the scope of what we're doing here. I appreciate it, but we don't, we don't need to, to hash that up right now. Um, do we have anybody else that needs to ask any questions, any comments regarding uh, Mo's variance?
I have a comment, sir. Um, Mr. Chairman. In reference to what Steve was describing, I appreciate your description, Steve, by the way, because I don't, like I said, have a picture. But, but Steve, I asked you, um, how many feet high? How many feet high? How high, how tall was the fence on the side? And you said four feet. So if this was a four foot fence that we're talking about here, he wouldn't be in front of us, is that correct? Jason?
Yeah, he, he has the right to build a four foot fence. He's asking for a variance of two feet to construct a six foot fence.
Thank you, Jason, for clarifying that. So do you, I don't know how to explain it. Maybe you would do better. The side is four feet, which saying is fine, it's pre-existent. But even if that extended to the front area, that would be fine and there wouldn't be any need for a variance, correct? But since we're talking six feet, two additional feet higher than the side, we do need a variance. I just want to clarify that, um, that difference in two feet that requires the variance. And I want to be sure that I'm hearing this correctly. Right?
Yes, you are. You're, you're hearing it correctly.
Thank you. Alright.
Yes, Steve.
My, my statement, Lois, was there is an existing four foot chain link fence
Mm-hmm.
that has been there forever.
Right.
That nobody's complained about. Now we're talking about a six foot fence, chain link, two more feet. And we have, we have complaints about it. That was the point I was trying to make. I know, I know if he goes with a four foot fence, he doesn't have to come in front of us. That's where I was going with it.
Thanks. I just want to be sure that I was hearing you correctly, Steve, and I appreciate that.
Warren? There are two ways to look at this variance. You can either look at granting a two foot variance for the fence height or granting a thirty-two foot variance for the setback distance. We've never actually discussed which one we're actually issuing. So you're looking at a two foot or a thirty-two foot?
Or both.
Whoa, 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 wait. Warren, what do you mean about that? Can you just explain that to me? What's the difference with the thirty-two foot?
You're right. So the six foot fence would need, under normal circumstances, would need to be forty feet from the front setback. It's gonna be eight feet from the front setback. So you're encroaching thirty-two feet into the front setback.
So it would basically be then two variances then for the six foot and the setback? Am I correct?
You'd have to pick one. Okay, cause once, once you encroach on it, you're allowing the six foot fence. So are you allowing a thirty-two foot variance to put it that close to the road? Or, and I should've had this conversation with Jason probably two years ago. Um, so we could clarify this because it's, it's always come up every time we have this conversation. Are we granting the variance for the distance or are we granting the variance for the height?
Warren, I think we've traditionally granted the variance for the height and I know that, or I should ask, what was on the application? What was he looking for?
I do not have the application in front of me.
I, I believe it was height. Let me pull it up. Hold on one second.
I think it was for the height.
Yeah, so I think we should stick with the height.
He was requesting a forty foot front setback to allow a six foot high uh, chain link fence. Is what is written. I'm, I'm not sure if this is the updated.
So would that require?
I can uh, I'm not sure I can put this on the.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Go ahead, Mr. Porter.
Well, the question I have, since I wasn't at the last meeting, is what am I voting on? A six foot fence, a variance of two feet on the fence? Cause it's getting confusing here. And I thought the setback was, we already met. Right? So we're not voting on setback from what I understand. And now I'm hearing we're voting on a, a thirty-two foot setback? Are we, are we voting on a fence or not? And if it is, we're only voting on from two, four feet to six feet?
My understanding was we were voting on the two foot variance for the six foot fence. Uh, what Warren just said, uh, changes that a bit, right?
Not necessarily because council is always on with, we've dealt with these issues that you, that's the discussion that they both should really have. Okay, but we have in the past only dealt with the height of the fence, not going back with the setbacks as part of that requirement, unless it had to be a variance for the setback. Am I clear on that? It sounds a little fuzzy. But if we're not, if we're voting on the fence, we're voting on the fence. We're not voting on potential setback, which would probably erase the fence in the first place.
Jason, could you, could you clarify that a little bit or?
I'm trying to. I wanna just know, what am I voting?
Yeah, you know, I, I. We all saw the application on the screen. Um, Mo, is it your, you are applying for a variance of two feet to allow a six foot fence? Is that correct?
I assumed.
I'm applying, as I said from the beginning, the two feet on the, you know, not the line, but the edge of the pavement as well as on the sides because that's only four feet. So I'm going six on the sides from forty.
Right.
Back to that edge of pavement. I've drawn it. It cleared everybody.
Okay.
Okay. Yard forty feet. That's what I'm reading here. So we'll change that.
He, he wouldn't need a side variance because he said six feet. Is it still eight, isn't it eight feet on the side? Would not require variance?
Nothing in the front setback, period, over four feet.
Right, but he.
If he's bringing the side fence up to the front property line, then that forty feet of fence is two feet too tall.
Yes, right. I understand that. Okay.
I, may I ask something?
This Holly?
Yes, hi there. Did I hear someone say that?
Holly, could you give us your, your name and uh?
Holly Christiana, Two Fairway Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Did I hear someone say that there's been a four foot chain link fence in the back of the property? Um, for many years and no one has complained? Did I hear that?
You did.
North side prop.
Okay, so I, I think that we should add a minimum, be honest with these meetings and understand that a four foot fence in the back of the property isn't a problem, but a six foot fence surrounding a property that is not a car dealership, is not a junkyard. It is not a parking lot because as I understand it, although I may be wrong, parking lot means an accessory use, right? This is not an accessory use. Um, people are upset, as we have said, because this is a very, very ugly project going in. With no discernible benefit to the community, as has been stated. Have we solved the issues with the water usage yet for cleaning the vehicles? And let's not pretend we can't understand why suddenly now a six foot fence matters when a four foot fence didn't matter before. Let's, let's be honest about what we're talking about here.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond? She said a lot of things. Can I respond to that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mo, I, I understand. Uh, I'm going to say a couple of things real quick that, uh, that there's no benefit to the community. There is going to be, right? There's no water on the property. Am I correct about that?
The benefit of the community is.
So you will be bringing in, uh, you will be bringing in outside, you know, giving jobs to folks to come in and wash the cars.
They, they keep saying the same things over and over that there's no benefit. I paid, it's almost eight, nine thousand dollars in taxes in the last few months. Where is that going? To a community in Long Island or the Middle East? So I paid a school tax for this woman's kids or the, in the neighborhood. So they keep repeating the same thing that this property had no tax revenue at all. Okay? That there is no detailing on the property, Mr. Chairman. I'm not talking to you like this. I'm just telling, you know, to them. There's no detailing. The water shut off. It's going to remain there. There's no bathroom. And we, we say that at every meeting, you know, like, you know, I have to keep on.
So, so you'll be, you'll be, uh, using, you'll be contracting out certain.
Correct. Mechanical details, correct.
Not only contracted out to the local community?
Yes, absolutely. And another thing is when they keep saying it's not a car dealership, it's a storage lot. Every car dealership is a storage lot. That's what a car dealership is until it's ready for sale. That's what they do. Some places have big giant buildings, you're right, and have no fences because they have millions of dollars to build these big buildings and store the cars inside. That's it. But they keep saying the same thing over and over and I keep addressing it over and over. No community benefit. I keep saying, what community benefit? Does this property have in the next nine years except being a dump? And, and you know, I can't get it.
Hey, thank you, Mo. Thank you.
I, I have one more question then regarding the eight to nine thousand dollars in property taxes. What is it going to do to the property values around it? Is that going to be eight or nine thousand dollars net gain? Because I would assume that if the Max went to sell their house, either one. That house isn't going to be worth quite as much overlooking the car dealership.
Okay, so I'm going to answer that.
Hey, thank you, thank you. Well, there's no need to really answer that. That's, uh, also beyond the scope of what we're talking about.
If we're talking about taxes, if we're talking about taxes being.
I'm sorry, so if we moved on to taxes, what we're talking about is a two foot variance for a fence. So that's why I would like to keep this conversation on the, on the variance. Um, there's no need to go back and forth on taxes and things like that. That's beyond the scope of what we're talking about. Um, so I appreciate your question, Holly, but, uh, that, that's to be asked at a different, uh, juncture.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I make? Mr. Chairman, are we ready to call for a vote or close the public hearing if there isn't any further public comment? I'm just curious.
I would call.
Is there? I beg your pardon?
Uh, does anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion, public hearing.
I'll second it. Unless there's any further comment from the pub. All right then.
No. Gabby, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith?
To move to public hearing, are you saying to move?
Close, to close the public hearing.
Yes, I just wanted to be clarified to close it. Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Golevin?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schultes?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay.
Now, it's up to the discussion of the board at this point, correct?
Correct, correct. Now we can discuss amongst the board. Um, does anybody have anything they want to add?
My first. Is, did this already go to county? Because I was not at the last meeting. I'm sorry. So did it go to county and would, wouldn't it have to go in front of county or no? It did.
It's gone to the planning board. It's gone, come back to us from the planning board. I don't know if you seen the email that I sent you. But, um, but he's, uh, here it is. This is the, you know, he's made some concessions for the, uh, planning board. Uh, mostly of what he was asked to do.
But this doesn't have it in county? Jason?
So this went to the county. This is the county, what you have in front of you is the county comments on, on the variance request.
Thank you, Jay. Seriously. Jason?
Yes.
Can I ask your opinion, um, the minimum variance? That should be granted.
So, so, so let me back up. So what the board can do tonight, the board can vote to grant the variance. The board can vote to grant the variance with conditions. The board can deny the variance. Or the board can adjourn, can table this to the next meeting. Those are your, your options.
Thank you.
And as far as the, um, standards for an area variance, the board is aware of the standards. Uh, these are factors that the board should weigh in making a decision. The, the applicant does not have to meet every single one of these standards. But the board can independently evaluate all the factors, all the standards in coming to a decision.
Jason, if I'm right, so if we were to make a, a motion, it would be to approve the six foot variance for the front fence. Is that correct? That's pretty much what you need. And then we can discuss and vote yea or nay.
To grant a two foot variance to allow a six foot fence on the property.
And that is what is before us now?
That is the question before you right now. Yes.
I will make the motion that we at least move that forward for a second so we can make the discussion and go for the vote.
A second.
Very well.
Well, in favor?
Well, I think I.
Well, no, 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 no. We're up for discussion now. We're not voting in, in favor or against.
Somebody made a motion to make that.
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm.
I don't care.
I'm, I'm in favor of putting it out there. I made the motion to put it out there.
All right.
You meant. So I do want to say that, that, you know, Mo has been, uh, in front of us, what, for three months now? I think it's been, correct?
That's why I think we go to the vote one way or another.
Yeah, and he's gone back and forth with the planning board. Um, he's met some of the, or most, I think of the, uh, you know, the resolutions that they were looking for. There's a noise, the noise, uh, that they didn't want. No business before noon on Sunday for the church. Uh, there was a concern about smells. Um, you know, cleaning agents, things like that. I think that's been met also since there's no water. He doesn't plan on having any water on the property. Uh, he's going to contract out the cleaning of the vehicles. Uh, the, the visual impact, which was discussed in prior meetings for the fence. Uh, to require vegetation and things like that. I think that's, uh, another thing Bo has added to his plans. Uh, the access to Early Avenue. So it's twenty five feet from the center, I believe. That's what we were at. And, uh, and the fence was moved off the front setback. Just want to throw that out there for everybody.
Can I ask you a question? Can you hear me?
Sorry. I can hear you now.
So when the public, uh, were speaking back and forth. It, there was, it was indicated that there is no water there and that this was going to be additional work contracted to the community. But the, um, the woman had said that there was water and soap on the ground there from somebody washing cars there. So if there's not water there, how would there possibly be water and soap and? Uh, so I was kind of confused with that comment is what I'm saying, that the one sentence is there's not going to be clean in there. Then there already has been, um, water and suds. And, and I'm not being challenged and I'm really not. I'm just trying to get my facts correct before I vote.
Mo, can you answer to that?
Does that, she, she's totally correct. There is no water. Okay, there's no water, there's no soap. And it would be frozen. From the snow, maybe. You know, but that's the only thing. There's no water there. It's probably melted snow. Right.
But you didn't, okay.
Absolutely not.
There's no water and you're not planning on turning the water on, right? That's, that's what you said?
No, no. If I build a building, if I do something, which I don't have plans to and it's.
It may be a while.
Except fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Do we have any other questions or comments? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, we have a motion on the table, don't we? Yeah?
No.
Did I? No? I thought I made the motion to to, to, to approve it so we could discuss it. I thought that's what I had done. Maybe not.
You just did if you want to.
No, I'm fine. It's a long meeting and we still have other things to go. So what do you make, what do you need the motion on, Kevin?
Uh, are we going to make a motion to approve it or deny it? Or do we want to, like, uh, Jason said, to, uh, shelve it? Which I don't think is a wise decision right now. I think we should make a decision on yes or no.
I, I, I really do think, with all due respect, I thought that the motion I had made was to approve it so we could get it seconded so we could discuss it and call a vote for it. Am I wrong, Jason? Is that what I did?
There's a motion on the floor by Andy to grant the variance. I think it was seconded.
Okay.
By Robert.
That's what I thought I was seconding.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
If there's no.
I'm sorry, I, I must have missed.
That's all right. If there's no more con, if there's no more comments.
Little girls over here, so I could, I could recite Robert's rule all night long.
If any board members want to comment, they can. Otherwise, Kevin, I think we can proceed to a vote.
Okay, do we have any?
I can make a comment that will reflect on what my vote will be if, if, if that's appropriate. Or do you want me to make the comment?
A long roll. You can do that in a long roll.
Okay, very good.
Play your vote.
Okay.
We've done that before down at City Hall.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion to approve the fence. Gabby, can you take a, a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith?
According to the facts and the substantial evidence that we've heard, that I've personally heard tonight. Um, and this isn't one way or another, but according to the facts that I heard, I'm going to have to say no.
Mr. Golevin?
I will have to say no. And the reason I'm going to say no is, uh, with these comments is first of all, overall. Our, our duty is to really take into consideration the local neighbors. Um, as well as the community impact. Um, I don't feel that it is within the, 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 the spirit of the neighborhood being that close to be such an enclosed area. I think that a lot of this hardship can be dealt with through lighting. I, it seems that, um, the applicant's concern is all about security. I get that, but we haven't had a lot of problems out that way. And I do believe that lighting would be a better way to go than to create such a, a, a change to the, in to, to the neighborhood. So my vote is a no.
Mr. Porter?
This is interesting. This has been going on for a while. I, I'm going to vote yes. Because I don't know what kind of a property is ever going to go in there to make everybody happy. It's been many years, many years, there's been nothing there. And now someone wants to throw a gamble on it. I don't know how successful he's going to be. I hope he is. I hope anybody comes to the town of Ulster successful. But the same point, we could be waiting for another ten years for somebody to show up and say, oh, I'm going to open a card store. I don't see that happening. So we have an opportunity to put something back on the tax roll. I know I sound like a capitalist. It's because I am. Um, a chance, yeah. Uh, we have a chance with something back on the tax roll. This gentleman, and I'm going to call his name, it's Mr. Wahid. He's not Mr. Mo. Okay, I don't even know the guy.
I don't, the application in front of me, so I did call him Mr. Mo out of.
That's okay, that's fine. It was respectful. There was no disrespect intended. I think that's part of it. So I, 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 I don't know. I mean, tendentially, if I was in a church, yeah, I know how they feel. I, I really do. You don't really want to see this massive fencing looking at me when I leave the house of worship. But at the same time, what do you want to see? Just this flattened area for the next ten years? We have an opportunity to get some usage out of it. So I'm voting yes. It's a fence that we're voting on. He could have made a four foot fence and you'd still have a fence there. You know, he wouldn't have to come before us if he did a four foot fence. So it's a six foot fence. Okay. I could dig this for security, but there's other dealerships are in this township that have no fences around it. Not the big one you see from the thruway. There's a guy right here in Ulster Avenue. No fence. There's a guy on, on, um, nine W going to Sawardis, Stage One Auto. No fence. Okay, so that isn't the reason I'm voting for it. I'm just voting because, uh, you're going to put a four foot or a six foot. It doesn't matter. It's going to be a fence and nobody's going to like it no matter what you do. Okay, so if you're going to use the property, the back of the tax rolls, thank you. I'm voting yes for that.
Mr. Schultes?
And this vote, I should have gone before Mr. Porter, but I kind of agree with him and I'm voting yes. Um, fence is a fence. Um, gentleman is taking a lot of his own time and money. He's taking a chance on a vacant property that's been vacant for quite a while. I do feel for the neighbors. I do feel for the people at the church. But, uh, he's willing to take a gamble and, um, I support him on that.
Chairman Reggino.
Comes down to this, huh? Thanks, Mr. Porter.
Welcome to the hot seat, Kevin.
Burning over here.
You get the big bucks with that.
The big guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. So, um.
Just remember, a fourth requires no variance.
A four foot requires no variance, right? So I'm going to have to agree with what Steve and Mr. Porter said. Uh, you know, this property's been there for quite some time. There's been nothing going on with that property. Uh, I'd rather see something come on it. Uh, I, I always, I'm always pro-business. I, I, I hope Mo does great and you know, more tax money for the county. Uh, so I'm going to vote yes. All right, Mo. That's it.
There you have it.
I'd just like to say thanks again to the gentleman who believes in me. I, I will not let you down. I promise.
That's not it at all. That's.
I mean, that's what it is though. So.
All right, guys. Well, thank you very much. It's not like that.
Two more to do.
We have two more to go. Oh, you're all set. Thank you. We're going to close this down. Take care. Bye now.
Great job.
It isn't a personal thing whether we're pro-business, not business. It's about what we're charged to do.
Correct.
How we really take in the overall scope of what we are charged to do. And, um, but, you know, we all have personal feelings and I just want to say we, we are charged to do a certain thing. And it's all great. It's, that's what democracy is all about. So well done.
But that's why we have.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, well done. Pause to follow, Andy. You're right.
And, and I will be right back because I just need to, I'll be right back.
Okay, bye bye.
Mr. Chairman. Yay, great job. Thank you.
May I make a recommendation that we take a five minute break? Before the next.
Okay.
Or just a five minute break, okay?
Okay, we'll take a five minute break before we get the NNS supply and colds to four.
Right, because my medicines are making my mouth so dry. I feel like I'm eating a desert.
All right, we'll be right back.
Jason and Warren, thank you.
Okay, thank you, oh, look. I see all these empty seats. Oh, we all took a pee break. That's funny. Look at everybody, look at all these empty seats, that's hilarious, and we're being recorded, all right then. Okay, everybody, did you all wash your hands? I'll be right back. Oh, God, these dogs, they're funny. Can I tell you, as far as this is concerned, compared to the Sawardies stuff that I had to deal with with the cell tower, this is easy.
Yeah, it is. It is, I remember was being a member of the charter commission. Where we did the entire charter for the city of Kingston, you know, bringing in a mayor, city manager, and then dropping the council from thirteen to nine, that was a lot of work. And then we had to go through a series of citywide public hearings, then we had to go back to the council and fight it out.
So, and it's interesting how TR pushed through the strong mayor at the last minute.
Then we became commissioners, Kate Fiore, myself, and at the time Gordon Webb suggested we put on a four-year mayor, now I'm a big proponent of city manager. A four-year mayor and a city manager, and let the people of the city of Kingston choose, because Kingston's solidly rooted in ancient tradition, that's the best thing I've got, right?
Yes.
And you can see how quickly they advocated it over to the mayor, well, there's nothing wrong with a four-year mayor, because at least you have a chance to strategically plan what you're going to do. All you would do is you had one year, then you're running for reelection again. So how are you gonna do substantial contracts? You need to do a tax increase.
Believe me, and someone who is on the common council, I mean, we were more as soon, and, and the same thing happens with our county legislators. As soon as they're elected, they have to worry about going.
One and again.
In a year, they have to go back and worry about reelection. And it really takes your eye off the ball when you have to go out.
Our shift to go to the city manager was to get away from that aspect of it. And let them take care of the nuts and bolts of daily government. How are you gonna plan your budgets, how are you gonna do the contracts? We, on the other hand, do the long-term planning. Okay? As well to be part of the committee as the ruler, cuz oh, for if Kingston didn't have a DPW, but basically a supervisor's form of government where the mayor didn't have, was not in charge of the DPW.
Well, they went over to a strong mayor, um, a very strong mayor.
Of that, the police department, the fire department, it's all run by commissioners. Every single one, the mayor had one vote.
Yeah, not so much at, uh, uh.
We had to change it.
We, we should talk, I had, I heard interesting stories about how.
All right, are we, are we, are we all back, are we ready to get going?
We're ready. We're ready.
All right.
Let's go.
So, so next on the, on the list, we have NNS Supply, uh, they are looking for an area variance to allow a sign larger than fifty square feet that is allowed per coat. Uh, I think, do, uh, that the gentleman that represents, uh, NNS Supply also represents Sephora, am I correct about that?
That's correct, uh, my name's Biker, I'm from Timely Signs in Kingston, and I'm, uh, here to represent both uh, entity tonight.
Could you repeat?
As well, so. Pardon?
I didn't catch his name, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, uh, it's Paul Biker from Timely Signs.
Did you get that, Lois?
I did, Mr. Biker.
So today, we're, we're going into public hearing, if you can tell us a brief description of what you're looking for, uh, before we open it up to.
Do we have to vote?
Public hearing.
Are we on NNS or Sephora?
We're gonna start with NNS first.
Okay. Um, drawings that we provided, um, which I, do you guys need me to show those?
Yes, I would love that, thank you.
Okay, um, let me get that going here.
Do we have to vote to go into public hearing for this?
Just doing an explanation of what it's for, then you can open the public hearing.
Okay, I thought I missed that.
A little tired, Warren, since what, six o'clock this morning, you been there?
No, I got in late this morning. Seven.
I'm sure Jason is right there with you, probably five o'clock this morning.
Probably.
Okay, guys, can you see this drawing that I'm sharing here?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So.
Nice.
This appears on the backside of Alan DeForest's project on Wood Road. You can see his, uh, sign, existing sign off to the right side. For a while, Alan had the entire uh, building, and now he's, um, sectioned off, uh, uh, an area of the building for NNS. Um, they have gone for permits and have received permits for a wall sign and a, a freestanding sign that was basically a retrofit. Uh, those have all been permitted, they're in place and they're installed. Uh, this particular sign required a variance essentially for the reason that there's already one sign on the fascia, and we're looking for a variance to add a second sign. Um, it is under the fifty square foot max.
No, it's under the fifty square foot max, so we're looking for a variance for a second sign.
Correct, I believe that, um, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think the, uh, the agenda actually listed that. I don't think it's a.
The agenda, the agenda listed that, uh, you were looking for an area variance to allow a sign larger than fifty square feet.
I think that's Sephora.
No, that's correct on this, the DeForest group takes up all of the signage allowed for that side.
Right.
Yeah, so you I says, you're talking about you, you're allowed fifty square feet for the entire wall.
For that facade, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so then I guess we do need the additional square footage.
Okay, thank you, so can we get a motion to open this up for a public hearing, please?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Gabby, would you prefer us to do a roll call, since, uh, we're, we're doing Zoom here?
Yeah, we can, um, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, do we have anybody from the public that wants to comment on NNS Supply, and they're seeking a variance? I don't think we do, right? I don't see anybody.
I don't see anyone either.
Nope.
I do have.
All right.
Who's that?
I do have a question. And what I'm looking at here, is this actually the side, the size of the sign that we will be voting on?
Yes, that is to scale.
To scale, right, I, yeah, I forgot how to say that word.
Yeah, it's a problem.
The math, the math doesn't add up, though. Three foot high, twelve foot long. Doesn't equal forty-eight square feet.
That's true, I don't.
He's an artist, not a mathematician.
I'm the mathematician, I'm the number guy.
I went to, uh, art school, and in four years, I wasn't required to take a math class, so.
See what I tell you? Yeah, I should have done that.
You need a motion to close the public hearing if there isn't anyone to speak for or against it?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Aye.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, do we have any questions from the board? I think it's pretty straightforward on the sign here, uh, I just wanna add that, uh, the, the county stated, uh, that there's no impact to the county for both NNS Supply and Kohl's.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application as presented.
I'll second that. Sorry.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, Paul, back at it, uh, with the Sephora.
Okay, Sephora. Think we're looking at this. Let me just figure. This was the elevation in question. You guys see that, okay?
I can see it, great.
Yeah, so um, they're looking to, uh, carve out this particular entrance, which is existing, and kind of rebrand that as the Sephora entrance, I don't know much about um, this particular brand, I believe it's, uh, cosmetics, if I'm not.
Yes, it is.
My wife says it's high-end cosmetics.
Take.
Not a big, uh, cons- consumer of, um, cosmetics, but, uh, that is what their target audience is, and, uh, from what I understand, they're pretty popular.
They are.
Yeah, there's two identical entrances, I think there's another elevation in here that they show that, yeah, I guess it's this one. They have, um, two entry points into the building, and they're taking the one on the right-hand side and rebranding that. Um, they're looking again for a variance for a second wall sign um, on that building. Uh, because Kohl's is, the existing, uh, coal sign is there in the center of the building, and they wanna put the uh, for Sephora over that particular entrance, that's what the variance is for, essentially.
I lost the last part, um, comments, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Uh, I lost, I don't know if my internet dropped or what, I lost when he said Kohl's sign was in the center of the building, that was.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go back here.
Thank you.
See, the Kohl's sign
I do.
Building, the right-hand side is the entrance that we're looking at, that's the sign that's coming there. Okay. And then, of this entrance, you can see the S and the Kohl's, this is where we're looking to put a set of channel letters on that canopy. Uh, because they treat the entire front of Kohl's, it's a significant amount of linear frontage. Um, but we, because it's a second wall sign, and I believe it brings them I don't have the agenda in front of me, I apologize, is this variance for a second wall sign?
Same idea as the last one.
Yeah, Kohl's took up all the allowed squared footage. For their, for that, for that facade, um, but looking at the size of the facade being over three hundred feet long, this additional fifty square feet is, is a drop in the bucket, basically.
Hmm, well, it's natural.
Thank you, Paul, uh, does anybody wanna make a motion to open us up to the public?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. I think, uh, it's the same as last time, I don't think we have anybody on here to speak, do we? I think they would have spoke with the. No.
Going once, going twice, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing. If there's nobody here? Hello? Public?
Was that?
We wanna hear from you, public, are you out there?
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'll make, uh, yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Did anybody second it?
Yes, Mr. Shultis did.
Okay, uh, yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, I think this one's pretty straightforward also, like Warren said, that size, uh, of lettering is a drop in the bucket. So, uh, would anybody like, uh, make a motion to approve?
Can I just?
Of course.
Okay, just so that it's on. What we see here, the Sephora sign, I think it's beautiful. Is that the color scheme that they're using, because you know how I am about the whole aesthetics of the plaza? It's beautiful, um, is that what the sign is specifically going to look like?
That's, um, that is a great question. Um, I have every reason to believe that AGI, who is the company that is, uh, creating this brand package for them, uh, is, that this is the final uh, design, so it will be a black and white theme. And it looks like the band will be either a black or a charcoal gray. Uh, it looks like they may be adding, um, like an aluminum composite panel system over the existing. I mean, I think that would be the best way to do it, I don't exactly know how they're going to do it, the construct, they're gonna have a general contractor come in and, and do that work, I would imagine they'd be pulling building permits as soon as they get, uh, word from us that they receive the variance for the lighting. Um, and I believe they do have a black and white theme, so I have a reason that it's going to vary from this drawing, if you wanna make it if you want to, you can make it conditional, uh, that it, that it meets this requirement. Um, I don't have any problem with it, I have no stake in it at all, we're just going to install these, these, uh, letters when, uh, when they arrive at our shop and the fascia is done, so we're not, we don't really have a lot of stake in the um, manufacturing installation of this, we're just doing this as part of, uh, a service to AGI, who we work with on a regular basis.
I can speak to that. This, this rendering is what's on the permits that are in review in my office as we speak, actually, review is done, I'm getting ready to issue the permit, that is the design that they submitted.
Okay, good.
Very nice, very tasteful.
Is, is, uh, is, is Koh- uh, Kohl's going to be a smaller square footage, and Sephora will be taking over what, a half of the store there, how is that gonna?
No, no, um, I had the number in front of me, like, uh, thousand square feet.
But they are cutting a bit off of Kohl's to get to Sephora in there.
Well, they're gonna, you're gonna pass through part of Kohl's to get to Sephora, it's kinda set in the middle direct line with that door.
Oh, where the sneakers and shoes are.
Of course we are.
You know better than me.
I gotta go there again. I don't think.
Men's department for me. So it's good, and pass the shoes. I'll look one direct.
I, uh, I don't think the cosmetics take up a lot of square footage, I mean lipstick tubes are pretty small, um, you know, blush. They probably just carved out a section like, uh, Warren said. But I mean, the brand is, uh, brings a little bit more vitality to the storefront.
Yeah, takes up a lot of room on my cabinet, uh, and.
All right, so it's, it's twenty-five hundred square feet, you walk through that door, and it's basically almost dead center in the middle of the store.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Oh, so it's not to the right.
Has anyone ever been to a Sephora? It is a religious experience.
Yes, I have.
Uh, no, I haven't.
And I'm not, I'm not a makeup queen, but it's, it's really a lovely thing.
It's a beautiful store.
Yeah, me neither, I.
All right. So did we wanna, uh, make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the application as.
And I'll second that motion that we approve the application as it is with that lovely sign. And I'll second that motion that we approve the application as it is with that lovely sign.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Schultes?
Yes.
Chairman Reggino.
Yes. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Can't wait. Thank you.
Ladies are very excited.
I know.
So it'll probably be here pretty quickly, I imagine.
I work with dogs. I don't do makeup anymore, but it is still a lovely thing.
I just need, um, I just need an accounting. We we haven't been billed for the sign permits yet. Um, that, for the signs are up, and I guess the office is just waiting to see if this variance goes through, so um, I should just call the office tomorrow and get an accounting of what we owe you guys, so we can send you some money.
Sure.
Okay.
I always, I always take money. I don't have a problem with that.
I have, too.
That's Warren Tuck.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. Always a pleasure working with the town of Ulster.
Aw.
Bye, thank you.
Good luck.
Evening. Take care.
All right, guys, that was an interesting one.
Yeah, I have a request of the board that we try to refrain from rescheduling the meetings. Um, it creates quite a bit of chaos on our end. Everybody's been used to the second Wednesday of the month, and all of a sudden you go to the third Wednesday, and it just, people go off. They're just used to something.
Yeah, I I think we rescheduled it because I was at, I was out of the country uh uh when we were uh past week for the original date, so we moved it forward. Uh, I think that was before we decided to go to Zoom, so if if uh if I knew we we were on Zoom, I would have been able to to join the meeting. So, yeah, we'll we'll try not to move that going forward.
Thank you.
Put yourself.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor with a goodbye.
All right.
Bye. Peace, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.